We'll open the floor to anyone who wants to speak for or against.
My name's Renee Burnt. I serve on the Planning Commission for the town of Paklet. My husband and I own properties in the town limits of Paklet. I would like to express my concern regarding my personal phone number being shared with, by an elected official, with Mike Ravan, the owner of the subject property requesting rezoning. Mr. Ravan began calling me at 10:15 last night and did not cease until 1:19 this afternoon. He persisted to call and message me through text messages, social media, private messages, and posting comments on social media. I know Mr. Ravan has not reached out to three other Planning Commission members. The Planning Commission and BZA were required to attend continuing education on October 6th. Mr. K was present for that training. The topic of the training was ethics. We were told by Jennifer Visage, the trainer with the Municipal Association of South Carolina, that we should not engage in private conversations with property owners regarding subject properties because it could be an ethics conflict, an ethical conflict. Mr. K was very dismissive of my concerns today regarding Mr. Ravan's persistent attempts to contact me. I do not feel our personal information should be shared, especially in this scenario. I also want to add that I do not believe this was done out of malice by the elected official. Mr. Ravan should have been informed that we are not permitted to engage in conversations with him being appointed to seats on the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals because, again, an ethical conflict. We could be in violation. Mr. Ravan deserves transparency throughout this entire process from Mr. K. We had our Planning Commission meeting on Monday, and I don't believe that Mr. Ravan received transparency because he owns landlocked property behind the doctor's office that will not be able to be built on. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, guys, ladies. I am Mike Ravan, the one this lady that I've never met before has been addressing. I have served for the last 25 years with the appointment of the governor of South Carolina. I'm very much aware of ethics. I serve on the board of Inland Camp of Bellwater with the pleasure of Henry McMaster and the two governors prior to him. I'm very familiar with ethics, and I will not even begin to address what this lady has said about ethics. Ethics and calling someone could be handled by just as she said, "We don't feel that this is ethical to talk to you." Rather than calling the police to call me and calm me down and threaten me. I have my phone registry. I did go to Facebook where she's got on there complaints of Paklet. It's all negative, all negative. I'm a builder, have been since 1978, and a developer, and I do serve on, still on, a statewide board, and I'm very familiar, and I don't serve as a volunteer. I'm very familiar with ethics, and I don't need a sermon. What I want to make sure of is that this board and this group know the truth about what's going on. I'm not saying anybody's lied, but there's been a major mistake, in my opinion. And I'm going to prove that to you tonight. It may mean that there's times that someone may feel embarrassed, and I'm sorry. And I apologize to the lady who thinks I was being a horse's rear. I don't, I'm very, very well for someone to sit on this board at a meeting and talk about how much some, when it was about zoning, had nothing to do with what you paid for the property. They're not developers. I've been since 1978. And yes, I know all about landlocked, and yes, I know what I'm doing and the comments without, I know who I'm dealing with here. I wouldn't want them doing nothing for me.
Excuse me. Are you talking to the council or are you talking to a member of the Planning Board?
I'm talking to the group.
You're addressing a member of the Planning Board, which is not allowed during the council meeting.
That would like for me to address, and I'll be more appropriate.
Okay, go ahead.
In 1978, I began working as a residential builder, and in 1984, I became an organizer for a Christian organization called Carpenters for Christ. That was under the direction of the church. I know many people in Paklet. I know the pastor at First Baptist Church, Tommy and Kathy Sparks, good friends with them. I know they've moved on. Preacher Band over at Paklet Mills, Ed and Linda Wyatt here in Paklet, longtime members of Paklet family. And one of my beloved friends is Ned Camby and his wife Donna and his children. I've known them for many years. In 2007, I became a full-time ordained minister and missionary. I quit my jobs, kept my license active as a builder, and became a full-time missionary. I traveled all over the world, as well as doing free work here in South Carolina and the United States, all over the world. People from Paklet have been generous enough to travel with us and support us, many of them. When COVID hit in 20, we had to come home and stop traveling. And at that time, I had no choice but to go back to doing what I had been doing for a number of years, and that was the construction business. I began to buy and remodel and flip and build houses. And in 2020, the late 2020, I asked Ned Camby if there was any houses in the Paklet area.
Patrick, how far are we on time?
I have not done time. Would the council like me to do time?
Okay. I mean, the citizen comments limited to three minutes?
Well, that citizen comment is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing?
Yes.
So we're just going to talk as long as we want?
We didn't set a time. Go ahead.
I was told that the town of Paklet had some property that was going to be coming up for auction, and that they would like for me to look at it. And I came down and looked at it in '21. And I found that it had mold, mildew, roof leak, water damage, air conditions wasn't working, a lot of cleanup needed to be done, and one bursted-out window. I put an offer in, me and my two partners. Neither of, could be here tonight. One of them's wife is here. I had one that got sick on the way coming down the road, and we actually, in order to be here on time, I sent him out in the service station to call family to come and get him. I put in a bid on it that I thought it would be, this was just two acres on the front with the building. And I was later told that I didn't get it. I was at least three down. And the other two ahead of me, when they did their due diligence, they did not want it due to the mold and mildew and other things. But I decided that we, when it was offered to me, to take it. It was commercial at the time. We began to clean it up, spending money on it, and trying to get it in sellable condition. We advertised it, listed it, selling it as commercial property. We showed it to two different churches, two different daycares, beauty shop, barber shop. And I had an investor that was interested in it after about almost four years, it'd been about three and a half years. I had an investor lady that was interested in doing townhomes on each side of the building and a daycare in the middle. She wanted to operate and run the daycare, and her family, her parents live in one side, and her live in the other side of a townhome, which would be a single-family dwelling. And on the right side of the building, where there's a lot of open land on the right-hand side, that she wanted to do some houses facing the main 150 and a drive, because there was an easement already there from where the doctors had owned the property and got an easement from Spartanburg Regional, who passed that on to the town of Paklet. And she wanted to put some houses there, so that meant we needed commercial as well as residential. I called Mayor Camby. I says, "Is there a possibility?" Because in Spartanburg County, they are several pieces of property that's listed as commercial and/or residential, especially in small towns where people live over their business. And he said he would check with the council and see. And that was in early, early this year. I can't remember the exact date because I wasn't asked to fill anything out by Mr. K or Mr. Camby. I wasn't asked to fill out something like, you put up here that I filled out this time. I wasn't asked to turn in a check for $250, as I was this time. I was told that they would approach the council, it would require two readings, and see if it could get it approved. Now, what did I ask for? Commercial and add residential. So after about two months, I called, I had not heard anything, I've been through, and I talked to Mr. Camby. And if at any time he disagrees with what I'm saying, I would appreciate it very much if he would speak up and say, "I disagree with you." And then when I called, I said, "How did the reading go, or did you ever do anything concerning what we had talked about changing?" I actually brought the lady to the town, I think Mr. K and others remember, to the town about her helping revitalize some of the streets, building houses on some of the streets in town, and brought a drawing of the daycare with two townhouses on each side of it. And at that time, I was told, yes, the council had approved it, okay? Still never got anything in writing, still never got anything saying what it was changed to. I assumed it was changed to what I had asked for, that of being commercial and residential. Now, we then listed it on the real estate listing, it's listed now as commercial. And this month, after four years, I had the first written off, four years, the first one. And that gentleman just didn't talk about doing it. He actually put it on paper, the way real estate's supposed to be, signed it, and gave us a deposit. And at that time, the customer that was wanting to buy it came to the Paklet town because he wanted to have an auction that could sell household goods. They call it auction house, selling household goods. I don't really know who he spoke with here. I don't really know who gave him the information. He called us and said, "I'm not going to be able to, I want my money back on the property because they told me at the town of Paklet that this property is residential." I said, "Yes, residential and commercial. That's what we got it changed to." "No, it's residential." I called Ned Camby, and I said, "He's telling me that this is now residential." That's not what I asked for. He said, "Let me check it out. I don't think that's right."
I'd like comments limited to five minutes.
What?
I'd like comments limited to five minutes.
You'd like?
I'd like the comments limited to five minutes.
Okay.
I'll try to finish up in five minutes.
Okay.
I feel like we've surpassed five minutes already.
Sir, it's evident that you have something against what I'm trying to say. I'm trying to tell the truth.
Excuse me, excuse me. We don't address, we don't address council members that way.
Excuse me, excuse me. Okay. We'll give you three more minutes.
So that's when I first heard that my property that I had purchased from the town of Paklet had been changed from commercial to residential. First time I heard of it, knew of it, there was no posters put up out there the first time, like there were this time. There was no paperwork required to be filled out this time, last time, like there was this time. There was no hearing about it that I knew of that time, as there was this time. And there was no fees paid that time, like there was this time. First time I knew that my property, I'm having it openly advertised as commercial for sale. I've got a doctor's office this week that's called about it. Not only the doctor's office, but I got a written contract. Now, I can't close on it by quarter 15th, as it says, because it was changed without me knowing it, removed commercial altogether and left it only residential. I found out through my buyer that I did about it. And so when I approached the town, they told me I'd have to fill this out, it'd have to be a hearing, there'd have to be two readings, it'd be a $250 charge to apply, and that's what I did. The other night, I couldn't come. Mr. K had asked me to come, and I told him that I would. I've had a death in the family. I've had to take medication. My daughter passed away, and it's been very distraughtful. I called the mayor and asked him, "Do you think it's really necessary that I show up?" And Ned, you said it's really not necessary. If there's any question that comes up that you couldn't answer, they would call me. But there was a whole list of questions that come up because I listened to it and watched it on YouTube. There was many questions, and I'm sorry I wasn't here to answer them. I was told that they would be answered or they would call me.
One minute.
And so at that time, I do have questions to all of those, but the main thing is the property was changed without even any notice, without it being posted, without anything coming to me that leave a knowledge. And I've got it listed still as commercial property, thinking it was commercial until the gentleman that bought it or put a contract and signed it let me know that the town said he could not use this as a commercial property. Thank you for your time.
Are you putting timer on me?
Yes.
All right. Chantel Lemmons, 140 Green Street. I'm also on the Planning Commission. I'd like to shed some transparency on this because I think we deserve to hear this, and I think that Mr. Ravan deserves to hear this as well. And when he's talking about the rezoning of this property, it was during our meetings when we were recreating the zoning ordinance. And when this was presented to us, it was presented as a multifamily, and we were asked to do both the front and the back lot like that, and we decided that the back lot would be too dense in that residential area, but the front lot would be fine. We recommended that to council. Y'all passed it in that sense. My concern is that there has been obviously a lack of communication between the conversations that our zoning administrator is having with our developers or with our citizens that's getting conveyed to the Planning Commission because we have zones that would have allowed commercial and multifamily. We actually, every single one of our commercial zones adds an allowance for multifamily, and in that multifamily allowance, there's allowances for single family. So this problem could have been resolved. And we did take into consideration at that time when we were doing the zoning ordinance that there was going to possibly be development there, and we wanted to help accommodate that. We were looking forward to finding growth in this area. So I really apologize that this was something that I really think we could have done a better job at doing here. But, you know, the Planning Commission can only work with the information we're given. And when this came back up to be rezoned after we had already zoned it like this, we did not want it to appear as if we were showing favoritism to somebody by rezoning and rezoning because we didn't have this background information. We didn't know that he was trying to do it as a commercial. As a matter of fact, as he said, Ned is his friend, Ned had spoken at many of our meetings there and had told us that it was going to only be townhomes. That's the information we were working with. In addition, in our meeting on Monday, and as Renee has said, we recently did an ethics training, they told us that during our Planning Commission meetings, it is not allowed for a council member, a mayor, anybody to be speaking from the audience. In the entire meeting, that was happening. We need to, we need to get our procedures correct. We need transparency. We don't need to be having battles over this every time a rezoning comes up because communication lines are purposely not being open or not purposely. I don't know. I don't understand. But this is, same thing's happening over and over again, so we really need to examine what we could be doing better because we just don't need this stuff happening. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. Changing it again, would that be like spot zoning?
I believe it would be, yes. And I've asked about that before. It's an issue we've had before when we came up to the DISH thing.
Changing it the first time, was that like spot zoning or because it was during the whole rezoning of, the whole new zoning ordinances and everything?
I believe because we were doing it during the zoning ordinance and we were considering development, and that is a main throwaway that it wouldn't have been such an issue.
Right.
And like we said, we did make edits to it where we believe the density towards that back lot was not a good idea, so it's not like we just didn't, we showed partiality.
At no point during all that process did you hear that Mr. Ravan would like to make it commercial and residential?
At no point. We were told that there would only be four townhomes. I asked multiple times, y'all can go look at this meeting too. Ned assured us that they were going to build on top of this building. I said, "How does that even hap-" I've never seen townhomes built on top of an existing commercial building like that, but that was what we were being told. And the possibility could be 20 different townhomes there, and we said, "Well, we don't want 20." But we were assured that it was only going to be four because of the septic tank and the sewage on that property.
Who told you that it was going to be built on top?
You did.
No, I didn't.
Okay, well, we can go back and look at the meeting. We can go back and look at the planning.
I said it'd be townhomes, but it wasn't going to be.
All right, I'm not going to argue with you, Ned. If you want to check, check the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Mr. Ravan, I recall seeing a drawing, and the drawings showed townhomes, and then the front part of the building's going to be used for something else. I mean, where's that drawing?
Yes, we received a drawing from the property owner, and on that drawing, it was divided up into four townhomes. And then the lines that you're talking about in the front was so that each of the townhomes would have street furniture that's on there, but the parking lot would still remain. That's the drawing that we perceived. It was always told to me that it was, there was an intent on turning it into townhomes. I can show the drawing.
That's what I recall. That's what I recall.
Okay. Yes.
My name's Bobby Crisp. I'm the one who has the property under contract. I didn't know anything about, anything about this was going on. I just happened to see the property for sale. I've had an auction house for 28 years in Spartanburg, South Carolin- Robuck. Somebody came down through there one day and said, "I want to buy this property," and I gave them a ridiculous price, and they signed the contract that day and paid me for it. So I've been looking for over a year for a piece of property. I found this property. My wife fell in love with it. She loved the part that it had 10 acres of land with it. We're not going to build anything on it. I'm going to be honest. She might hunt on it. There's nothing going to be built on it. I can promise. So if that's what y'all wanting, you don't want to, I'm not going to build on it. I don't like neighbors. I'm going to fix, my plans are, I'm going to probably spend $200,000, $300,000 on it. I got the cash money because I sold my property. I'm going to put a new roof on it. I'm going to put new windows in it. I'm going to redo the whole inside. I'm going to put a kitchen for my auction house in it. Going to have good food, going to be a quiet atmosphere. It's not going to be any outsells outside. Everything's going to be done inside the building, not going to have no equipment sales or any, I do those things. If I do them, I do them on site at the people's house if they pass away. We do not do that on the property. I wouldn't do my neighbors like that. I don't know if any neighbors is here or not.
I dress us.
Well, okay, I'm sorry. I thought if neighbors was here, I wanted them to know.
Okay.
What was I saying?
Sorry.
Anyway, I forgot.
I'm sorry.
But it's going to be, it's not going to, I mean, I know y'all had a couple auction houses here in the past, and I've been to them. It's nothing like that. We do a million dollars a year income. Lots of our income is online sales. My wife does all that for me. We do state sales for people when they have a death in the family. We go get their merchandise, or either we sell it on, if it's like cars or something, we sell it on their property at their house. If it's, you know, sometimes like the city of Spartanburg, they won't let you do that, so you have to, I'd have to bring it to the auction house and sell it. But it would be nothing outside. It would be all inside. Like I said, the building's going to look, it's not going to have, it's going to have new windows in it. It's going to be pretty. It ain't going to be a bunch of homes scattered out everywhere. I mean, if that's what you want, I got the cash to buy it. I got the contract in my pocket. I got the $5,000 earnest money. I got a copy of it where they cashed it. And if anybody has any questions that they want to ask me about it, I'll be more than ask, I'll be glad to answer. I mean, I ain't got nothing to hide. So if you don't want me to move to Paklet, that's fine.
There's a lady back in the back there.
Okay.
How much traffic does this?
Well, it would only be two days a week, so.
And how many people would come?
Probably about 70 people, so that would probably be about 30 to 35, 40 cars. I mean, you know, we sell, we're not selling doodads like they do at these other, I mean, we're selling $30,000, $40,000 pieces of times, furniture. I mean, it's not like you buying just trash. I mean, I've been the one down here. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I just don't want to get that, y'all to thinking that's what I'm doing because that's not what I'm doing. It was Spartanburg City for 15 years, and then I moved to Robuck, so we changed it to Robuck for like. No, no, it was, "Do you know where Hardee's is in Robuck?" Okay, if you come back down this way, we had a restaurant called Country Joe, and we had an auction there for 16 years, I think. It was Robuck Auction House at the time. Anybody? Yeah, I don't want, I'm not here to hinder anybody. We have.
I've never met this gentleman. I want to ask a question because a lot of people here was concerned. Do you sell alcohol?
I do not. I'm a Christian, and I'm not saying alcohol is a sin, but I'm a teeter again. I do not like it.
Mr. K.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. K. Okay.
$24. Anybody else?
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
One more thing. I am a licensed auctioneer, so I have some trouble with the auction laws, so they ain't going to be no.
Okay.
I'm Willie Crocker. I live at 390 Glen Springs Highway, and this fellow gives his background of his life, what all he's been doing in the past. Well, I've been a volunteer fireman for 58 years. I've served in town council for 24 years. I've been on the 15 years chairman of the commission board of the fire district. I go on and know. That don't mean nothing, you know, what I've done in the past. What I'm here for tonight is what's fixing to take place in front of my house. I was at a planning meeting Monday night. I voiced my opinion of why I didn't want to go to the commercial. Tuesday morning, I had a visitor. I was fixing to go out, I was fixing to go to Union Cyclone. I went out. Mr. Ravan pulled in, got talking to me, wanted to know why I was opposed to that being a commercial. I explained to him why. Well, for 10 minutes or more, he completely voiced his opinion, which wasn't good, about how me and Joe and Kathy were stabbing in the back. It got louder and louder and louder. The neighbors over there standing out there watching. My wife heard him. She opened the door, started outside, and I'm going to go back in. I didn't appreciate that, not one bit. And I told him this. I said, "What you've done, you went and bought something, now it's a burden to you." what you've done, you went and bought something and now it's a burden to you. The only thing you want to do is put that burden on this community, neighborhood. We ain't going to accept that. We love this community. Joe just built this new big house outside of me, beautiful house. I got a grandson, two houses above me. Spent a quarter of a million for that house because of the neighborhood, the way it is. And now we don't want to see it change. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
I don't have such an extensive resume. I'm not a builder. I'm not a developer. But I know that I get my taxes every year and I know whether it's residential or commercial. I'm sorry. I'm Joe and I'm 420 Glen Springs Road directly across the said property. I don't want an auction house across the street from my house. It's not going to bring the town any great tax increase value to the town. It's not going to bring jobs to the community. And it's one site, but it's a residential community. And I just don't think, I did not visit that auction house, but a lot of these auction houses have a lot of junk around them. And, um, I don't want it across the street from my house. And, uh, we're on a main thoroughfare coming into Paklet and it's a first impression when people come into Paklet. It's not going to make that big of a difference if we don't have that changed to, or to a commercial. I, I'd like to see it remain residential.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I feel like, um, we're on repeat and. Sure. Y'all probably know my tax parcel number by now, but yes, my name is Beverly Dee Dee Quinn, 421 Briarwood Drive, Paklet. Um, I want to make a couple of statements, observations. The information that's been presented here is a repeat and a repeat and a repeat. You have the planning committee. They worked over a year on the Paklet new ordinance policy and that went into effect April, May 2025. Is that correct? And right before that, part of, um, part of the development was the Paklet master plan. All of these properties around Paklet were extensively studied and I, and, and the ordinance was developed therein. So it seems to me like the purpose or, or the goal of Paklet is to get rich on whoever will bring whatever to our town. And I just want to redirect us back to our master plan. So number one, complete the construction of priority projects. Cloth room. Number two, develop additional plans for projects as needed. Maybe that's what we're here under number two, additional plans for projects. Number three, coordinate with partners to develop, complete the Dan Trail connection. Number four, take actions to restore the amphitheater. Number five, complete the Old Mill Trail improvements. Number six, improve downtown roads and sidewalks. Number seven, improve the appearance of downtown and encourage redevelopment. And then we go on to the next five years to begin the redevelopment of Victor Park, coordinate the development of the zip line through the river, improve the parking. We've talked about, um, the portage. Over the last six to eight months, we have heard this repeated story and I just have a concern that the town again is not, is not developing and they're not holding true to what our true values are as a town. And we're not placing the importance on Paklet River is our gem. Paklet River is where we need to be concentrating our efforts. And I also want to point out that transparency has been the word of the day again, which is what I have tried and tried and tried to bring to your attention and beg for you to have better communication and more transparency throughout all processes to develop the town. And again, it seems like we have failed in that area. And that's really sad because we have so much potential to be so much more. Um, and also I guess the time limit on speaking just depends on who you're friends with or what your project is, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Evening, y'all. My name is Rob Henry. I'm Veterans Liaison Benjamin's Family Center. I reside and own 540 Hillbrook Circle. Uh, there is a great deal of concern amongst some of my neighbors about what this building could be. This man says he wants to open an auction house. Uh, we already have an auction house. There is a whole lot of underutilized commercial property already in Paklet that is not being used. So why would we be encouraging people to buy some of these properties that are already rezoned as residential, to rezone them, to build something that we don't necessarily need and does not necessarily benefit us as a town? Some of the people that I've spoken to have, uh, relayed horror stories of things that have happened in other areas that they have lived, um, where it gets told that it's being one thing, but then once it gets sold, uh, under a new zone, that, uh, somebody else will end up buying it and build something completely different. We just want to know if this is going to be moved over to a commercial zoning, what are they going to be allowed to build there? And if it stays residential, uh, zoning, how many houses are going to be built there? The man says he doesn't have any plans to develop the 10 acres behind the doctor's office. Is there any way that we can actually hold him to that? That's all I really got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're going to call this to the end. I don't see anybody else wanting to speak. And, uh, we'll call this, uh, hearing to end. Uh, we'll, uh, give about a five minute break and then we'll go into, uh, our town council meeting. Uh, like to, uh, introduce Mr. Paul Abbott right now before we go into the meeting and, uh, let him introduce himself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate this time. I am Paul Abbott. I am your new county council representative. Already taken office, had my first meeting last week, have my second meeting next week. Just wanted to stop by and say thank you to the community, the town. I was fortunate enough to receive over 80% of the vote, uh, in the Paklet precinct. That's incredible. And, uh, you know, I'm indebted to the Paklet community. I appreciate that. Just want to let y'all know, I'm here to, uh, assist you, serve you in any way I can as the town and also as any individual. I mean, uh, contact me at any time. Uh, I get you my contact information. And again, just to say thank you and that the Paklet community has a friend on county council. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Okay, we'll take a five minute break and then we'll get into the county, the town council meeting. If anyone wants to leave, they can do so. Not, you can stay with, for the commi, for the, uh, call the meeting to order. In compliance with the Federal Information Act, notice this meeting was submitted by facts to the Spartanburg Herald Journal, uh, posted in, on the bulletin board, lobby of town hall and on the towns, we will, we will now have the invocation.
Dear heaven and father, I want to thank you for this day. I want to thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon this town over the years. Want you to watch over and protect us in the future. Want you to give us the wisdom to make the decisions that's best for this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all. Have any citizen comments? Okay. I need approval of minutes of November 13th, 2025.
Motion to approve minutes for November 13th, 2025.
A second.
Motion made in a second to approve the minutes of November 13th, uh, 2025. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Department reports.
Just want to let council know there was a correction on number one, uh, from what I had originally sent you. Um, it's the, uh, the Christmas party at Benjamin May's is December 12th at 6:30 and the Christmas parade and after party is December 13th at 5:30.
Okay.
And there were some things that I needed to get from council. Um, there was, uh, for the, for the lights, uh, for the Christmas lights, there are two lights that are currently not being lit on number nine, going from 150 out to Hart Street. Um, I don't know why they're not on because they were, um, they did have, uh, electrical outlets installed for them. Um, reached out to Duke Energy to find out what's, what's currently going on with that and why they haven't already been, uh, lit up on there. Um, there will be the Stormwater Master Plan presentation that will happen in January. Item six on here, um, we've received a $5,000 grant and, um, if council would like, I can, um, apply for a part grant in the amount of $33,000 to $35,000. Is that the direction of council that you'd like for me to proceed with that?
Is there a reason why that's not an item on the agenda as opposed to a question in the administrator's report?
Uh, no, it's just, um, if you wanted me to apply for that grant or not.
I would say apply for every and any grant you possibly could. I don't think you need council direction for that, right?
Uh, yes. Here, to your question, yes, please apply for that.
Um, number eight on here, um, if you, just letting, letting you know that this has occurred, the, the judge's term was from, uh, June 2021 for four years. And so that has come up. Um, I need to know how you want to, you want to have the current judge continue or do you want us to evaluate other judges? Uh, do, would you like to send me comments and let me know your thoughts on there, uh, of how you want to proceed on there?
You skipped number seven.
Uh, I only went over the highlights because you had instructed me not to read everything.
That's cool. Read number seven if you don't mind.
Sure. After four months of discussion with the employee handbook, I think it's best, uh, not to change anything and keep the previous handbook the way it is. If anyone is interested in making changes from the current, please send me those changes to be added.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Oh, no. On number eight, with the municipal judge, have there been any issues, uh, the past four years? Has everything been pretty smooth and?
I personally haven't had any issues. Um, you may want to talk to the, um, clerk of court, um, or the chief of police to get, uh, further information as they would have a lot more interactions, um, with the judge than I would. I do attend as many to court as I, as I can. Uh, and Judge Smith has been great as far as I understand.
As far as I'm concerned, uh, if there've been no issues in the last four years and everything's been smooth and clerk of court and the police chief is pleased with, uh, how things have been, I would pursue renewing the contract.
Okay.
She's not retiring or anything, is she?
Sir?
She's not retiring or anything, right?
No, and I'm not even sure that she's aware that her term has already expired. That it's never been brought up before.
Okay. We would need to vote on that.
If you would like, I can, uh, discuss with the judge and make sure she's good with another four-year term. Uh, I can also discuss with the clerk of court as well as the police chief. And if there's no issues there, uh, I can bring that up as the next council meeting.
Think that'd be good. Okay.
Wanted you to be aware of number nine on here. Uh, there are, um, five properties that have been identified as condemned. Um, and I have a letter that I've included in your packet to let you know that is planned to be sent out. Um, if y'all are okay with that, I plan on sending that out.
Needs to happen, needs to happen.
Yeah, proceed.
Proceed.
Uh, number 10 on here, um, regarding the capital improvement fund, uh, we can leave things as they are. Uh, you can, you can, um, have an official capital improvement fund, uh, created by ordinance. Um, you may want to wait until we find out what's going to end up happening with, uh, the department on aging grant if the town's going to have to pay back the $350,000, which would be a substantial amount to be able, that, that could go into that fund.
Anything else?
That's all that I have.
Okay. Board of commission, uh, committees.
Sir, I have no other, the, the other reports are in your packets. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, moving on. Number nine, uh, consider adopting, uh, the 2025 Planning Commission Board zoning appeal schedule. I'll have that. Anyone, any discussion?
I make a motion to approve the schedule.
A second.
Motion made in a second to approve this, this zoning, uh, board zoning appeals schedule. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Consider appointment of the planning commission, uh, which are expiring on, in 2025. Uh, Angelique Panell, uh, Penelope Mitchell, those two are, uh, uh, and then, uh, resigning due to election, uh, position is Chantel Lemmons. So there's three positions we need to fill.
If, if this time, uh, the position of Ms. Panell and, uh, Mr. Mitchell are up for y'all to consider, um, at this time, uh, Ms. Lemmons has, um, not, has not resigned yet and is going to be waiting until after the January 5th meeting and then, um, and which is legal for her to wait until that time. And then if council approves for the Jan, uh, January 8th, first council meeting, uh, she can resign then after the 5th and then you can re, you can appoint somebody at the.
Can we, can we appoint one in, uh, in advance of that?
I mean, that's up to you guys.
I nominate Ned Camby to fill the, um.
Patrick. Take that off the screen. That, uh.
Sir?
Take that off the screen.
Expired.
The, the members off the screen.
Here's the phone numbers, parcel information.
Got the phone numbers on it. Okay.
Had nomination.
He had a nomination on the floor here. Need a second.
A second.
What was the nomination?
Uh, Ned Camby.
After his may, uh, governor, uh, mayor term expires to be on the, um, planning commission.
Any questions? I don't think I can vote on that one. When does the?
When does the, when does the other peoples expire?
They're the the terms for the two that are currently voting on are the other ones.
The ones that they're currently voting on?
Their term expires at the end of this year.
At the end of the year?
At the end of the year.
So we so we can wait?
So we would have to wait to the end of the year?
Yeah.
The terms expire at the end of this year and typically
I won't be on it until after the, you know, if I was elected or something, I wouldn't be appointed, I wouldn't be on there until after the first of the year, after the first meeting.
You'd have to be sworn in.
You wouldn't be eligible until the swearing in of the new mayor at the January council meeting.
Yeah.
So what are the dates?
It would end up being the
January fifth meeting.
The January fifth meeting is is, so if you move forward with this, Mr. Camby could not serve on the fifth meeting and would have to wait until after the eighth meeting if council approves that schedule.
So he couldn't be appointed to it until after the next mayor is sworn in because he's the mayor until
The end of the year.
The next January council meeting.
But I'm unaware of anything that says you can't go ahead and appoint something for an upcoming term.
If if that's the case, if being elected is the criteria, then Ms. Lemmons would have to resign now. But it's the swearing in, I believe, which I think is
The swearing in, yeah.
Right.
So. Where are we staying?
You just have to be sworn in at the later meeting.
Yeah.
Unless unless you resigned.
All right.
I think it's better to be safe to wait until the January meeting. I mean, either way, Ned Ned is the only one
You're going to wait to all of them?
Yeah, I mean, wait until the January meeting to appoint people.
Fine.
If we wait till January, then then Ms. Pannell and Mr. Mitchell's terms will be expired.
Yeah.
And I spoke with Ms. Pannell today and she would like to stay on the Planning Commission. So I'll make a motion that we keep her on the Planning Commission.
Well, we got to resolve the first one first now.
Okay.
So.
Do you want to put it to a vote or?
I guess we need to. But I mean, or you want to just wait till after the the fifth and appoint all of them? That'd be probably best.
I just I just meant because of the particular circumstances revolving, your current mayorship wouldn't expire until the next swearing in of the of the new mayor. You would be essentially appointed and elected to two positions, which really isn't.
No, he wouldn't be appointed to the second one yet because he wouldn't be sworn in yet.
Yes.
Resolve this by simply saying appointed effective January eighth. That the appointment comes, you can put a delayed date.
Okay.
That would need to be in the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, you need to add that to your motion.
Put that in the motion.
All right, I rescind my previous motion and make a motion to nominate Ned Camby effective January eighth.
A second.
Second, motion made in the second. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? I'm staying. Okay. You want to do?
All right, I was saying earlier, I spoke with Ms. Pannell today and she would very much like to stay on the Planning Commission. So I'll make a motion that we continue to allow her to serve on the Planning Commission.
A second.
Motion made in the second. Will that be in on effect, the same dates be affected or the end of the year?
hers can be effective immediately at the end of this term.
Okay. All right. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. All right. We'll have to wait on
So for Caleb, do I need to appoint someone? Because his term is up?
I think we'd have to wait till another seat
Okay.
Became vacant.
Got you.
Yeah. After the
Okay, consider appointment of the board of zoning appeals, which are expiring in twenty twenty-five. Gordon Erickson and Angela Pilgrim and resigning due to elected position Jamie Cooper.
Nominate Gordon Erickson.
A second.
Motion made in the second Gordon Erickson. Any questions on him? All in favor? All opposed? Okay? Angela Pilgrim, yeah, anybody got another appointment? Do we know anything that she wants to stay on?
Yeah, she wants to stay on.
Okay.
So. I want to reappoint, I would like to reappoint Angela Pilgrim to stay on.
And I second.
Motion made in second to appoint Angela Pilgrim, stay on the board. Okay? Any other que, any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay? And Jamie will resign, I mean, he was coming up with when he takes office in January.
Will we have a quorum for that board after Mr. Cooper resigns?
Yes, you'll still have, I believe, six people that'll be on there.
Okay.
So you want to wait till after the first of the year, after the first meeting to appoint someone else? Or do y'all want to get with someone that wants to be on that board?
I think we have time because we still have a quorum. I I would like to nominate someone, but I have to confirm. So I don't I don't have a nomination right now.
Okay. Anybody? Okay. Okay, unfinished business. We don't have any new business. Consider approving twenty twenty-five employee Christmas bonuses.
Motion to approve twenty twenty-five employee Christmas bonuses.
Need a second. Y'all not going to vote?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made in second to approve employee Christmas bonuses. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Consider the first reading of RZ twenty twenty-five dash zero two request to rezoning of
You missed B on there, sir.
I'm sorry. Consider adopting the twenty twenty-six town council meeting schedule.
Just a point of reference on here, January first is your typical first Thursday and based on your ordinance for elections, it's typically set up and your ordinance for new council members to be sworn in the first Thursday. However, speaking with the attorney, as long as council approves, moving this to January eighth, you would also be moving the swearing in of new council members to January eighth as well.
I make a motion to set the schedule as written.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the council meeting schedule as written. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, consider first reading of RZ twenty twenty-five dash zero two request to rezone thirty-three thirty-three dash thirty-three dash zero zero dash zero six three point zero one from multifamily residential district to C two neighborhood commercial district.
I've got a couple comments. This this particular item kind of baffles me a little bit. For a lot of reasons, I'm not going to go through all of them, but we, I know we have concerned citizens here. My understanding is that they would rather have the blighted boarded up empty building instead of a building that's fully renovated and occupied, which is the most baffling thing. I remember two years ago, I think it was about two years ago, we did almost this exact same thing, right on the same road, actually, one mile away. It was in my district, that's why I fought tooth and nail for it. I don't know what the vision is for District Two and what Councilman Brackens kind of envisions. But if history is a teacher, we we had a an empty blighted building. It wasn't as bad as this current building we're discussing. But it was clearly a commercial building that at some point along the way got rezoned as residential. It is the old Satellite Depot, clearly was always historically commercial, built to be a business. We rezoned that commercial and almost immediately it sold. It was renovated and is now occupied occupied by a new business. And another baffling thing is a lot of people that were for that particular rezoning are against this one. I don't know why. But what I do know is that this site has been the site of criminal activity. We had two, I believe, two recent incidents that involved police action with break-in, which is why it's now boarded up. I don't know if they were stealing copper or something, but that's unsafe and and to see and to see that on a main corridor coming into town, it's not a sleepy neighborhood, it's it's Highway one fifty, a major through road. Clearly a commercial building has been zoned commercial for decades. You know, if I was Mr. Brackens, I would rezone it a hundred times if that's what it took to get it sold and fixed and the problem solved. I would hate to think that you know, district, my district, District Four, I'm very passionate about solving problems and improving the lives of my constituents and bringing businesses and fixing blighted buildings. I would hope other areas of town would see that. The crime alone is is a reason for for me to support this, so I'm going to make a motion to approve on first reading RZ twenty twenty-five dash zero two.
We still open for discussion?
Yes.
All right, my name was brought up in that several times.
Sorry, I didn't mean to call you out, Rick.
I personally would like to, my understanding is it was a meeting of the zoning board. And I haven't heard anything of what they recommend. I would like to I'd like to review their recommendations and we've appointed these people to the board and I respect the time and effort that they put into it and I'd like to know what's recommended. We also adopted earlier this year master plan?
Comp plan.
A comp plan and all of this was changed. I personally believe that as a representative, we need to make a stance and and make a decision and stand on it. We can't be changing every time the weather changes. So I personally would like to see this table until I receive more information. I don't have until tonight. I had no idea what the plans were. I hadn't been made aware of it. I didn't attend the zoning meeting and I haven't heard any any response as to what the zoning commission
Can I, can I ask you something? You mentioned the comp master plan. Is there is there something in there that is inconsistent? I know we have plan, you know, plans for the river, but my understanding is that that doesn't say the rest of the town can't be fixed up or developed or worked on. My understanding is that we've got we've got big plans for one area, but if, I mean, I never would have voted for it if it meant the rest of the town had to kind of take a backseat.
Well.
Because that would mean District One alone would get all the attention. I mean, my constituents didn't elect me for that.
It was reviewed and it was zoned for residential at that time and we all voted on it.
Right.
And I don't, like I said, I haven't heard the response or the opinions of the zoning board. And I personally, my personal, I know you made a motion. I would table this until I have further information.
Me as well. I I didn't hear about any of this until Monday. I've received nothing more than watching the video on Monday and had no information until I got my packet on Tuesday. So be honest with you, I had no idea that any of this was going on. Until tonight, listening to the different people that talked, I had no no in-depth knowledge of any of it.
The
And I want to say that as well. I had no clue either. And also too, as far as the 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 master plan and such, when the rezoning was done and just I think Renee and maybe Ms. Chantel had referred to it as well. And Dee Dee.
Go ahead.
We we can't keep changing on a whim when someone all of a sudden wants to change it from this to that, when we've already voted that it's residential. It seems like every time we do something and somebody else wants to come up and make it this or they want to buy it and do it this and have it commerce rezoned this way or rezoned that way to suit their needs, then we want to make a change. We need to stand by what we voted for. We need to stand by what the Planning Commission and the zoning appeals work for, works hard on. We don't need to keep making changes. So what was all the work for?
They're going to have a, they're going to have a meeting when on the fifth, is that right? Okay, they're going to have a meeting on the fifth to present what their findings and all. And, you know, I think, you know, that's probably what you all are talking about. You want to go in?
I'd love to go ahead. I mean, it's a no-brainer for me. If you want to wait, that's fine. I think it's just delays, you know, a good thing. But in response to that, I mean, if it was if it was my district, I'd I'd re, I'd change it a hundred times till we found a deal that worked. I mean, deals fall through, nothing, you know, it's not a straight line. People aren't exactly kicking down the door to to invest and pack it. If you can find someone that'll do something, we're talking about two hundred thousand dollar renovation on a boarded up building. I mean, it's pretty, it's a no-brainer for me, but.
Okay, so you were sending your
No.
No, you, okay.
Leave it. I mean, if it dies, it dies.
Okay, he's got a motion to approve the first reading. Do we have a second? Going once. Okay. All right. It dies. Okay, need a, Ricky, you had a motion?
Table it. Well, I was making a motion to table it until after we have further information.
Okay.
We can reconsider this in January if necessary.
Motion table it. Any questions on that? All in favor?
A second.
All opposed?
I second.
Need a second, I'm sorry.
I second.
Okay, so motion made in the second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay?
The item information was actually in last month's packet from the administrator.
Thank you for that correction, Mr. Kay.
Sure.
Okay, listen.
That was in the administrator reports of last month, is that correct?
Administrator's report under item nine.
Item nine administrator's report?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, D, discussion regarding short-term rentals. Patrick, you have it?
At this time, short-term rentals or Airbnbs or VRBOs are currently not allowed under use for the town of Paklet. This was something that came up under, when the town was discussing the zoning ordinance. There were mixed reviews for both, from, from different people on the steering committee, both for and against on this. It was, I was asked by Mr. Williams to add this as a discussion item on here. I've included some information that's been sent to me by both municipal association and the COG. Forwarded this information to our town attorney who has done some work, work on there as well. What I need from council is to know what your interest is on short-term rental and how you'd like for me to proceed. And what would end up happening is if, if it dies right here, then it dies and we don't do anything else. If council wants to explore this further, I can, I can bring you more information. You can also recommend something to be crafted up for the town of Paklet. And then at that point, it would go to the planning commission to review, then a public hearing and then two council readings to proceed on there.
Yes, so the reason I, I wanted to bring this back up, we kind of were waiting on the state to make a decision on this. I think that's why it got, the can kind of got kicked down the road during our rezoning meetings. The state has not done anything. But in, considering our comp and master plan and the planning commission's desire to make this town, well, all, all of ours desire, but they reiterated it on Monday to make the town like our adventure town, recreation town, adventure tourism, which is all in the master plan. We have to have some accommodations. We have no hotels, we have nothing. So we had one Airbnb, which we shut it down. We, we need to start the process of, of allowing that. You know, it doesn't have to be tonight, I'd like to see some more information and see, you know, something more formally written up. But as soon as we can get that, I kind of gave this to Mr. Kay at the last minute. I'd like to basically reopen Paklet for visitors.
Regarding the Airbnb, the one he's talking about that we shut down, it was shut down, number one, because there again Paklet in there it was in was not zoned for an Airbnb. And also the lady had not even come down here to even get a business license for it. And that was in my District Three and it was over in Michael Estates, which is a family neighborhood with, with kids. There's one way in and one way out, it's very small. You go in and go around a curve, become a cul-de-sac and you come back out. So I think it'd be very hard to, if you do decide to do something like this, were you going to say Airbnbs can be and where they cannot be? Because personally, Michael Estates people over there didn't want it there again because it's a residential. They have babies, you know, kids ride around playing in and out of the road. And when you got traffic, that's a one-way in and out, it's not healthy.
Do you, do you have a recommendation on a different neighborhood that would be better for it?
No, I don't have a recommendation, I'm just saying it would be hard to choose to say what neighborhoods you would say that you could allow Airbnbs, but not allow an Airbnb over here. Because then you start picking and choosing. You know, a neighborhood like in Michael Estates, they don't want it. You know, they had several people that came in and, you know, and made noises and carried on and parties and such and in and out. And, you know, they, like I said, they're fearful for their children.
We're not going to make a decision tonight on that.
No, but I'm just saying, it, it's going to be hard to, to, to decide to have Airbnbs because then it's going to get down to the nitty-gritty of what neighborhoods can have them.
Well, yeah.
I think a discussion will, you know, in the future, they'll have, they'll have that discussion and come up with some areas it can be, you know?
Yeah, nothing's easy.
I think it's important that all council members look at the possibility, whether for or against, and even, and, and have some kind of idea of what they're willing to allow in case the rest of the council decides that they're moving forward with the idea of it. At least they'll still have some input towards the decision. So whether you're for or against it, I think it's important that you have some kind of idea of how you would like for it to evolve if it does in fact happen.
Exactly, I mean, you, 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 it's going to be a discussion. It can be, you're not going, you're probably not going to decide on it next meeting. It's going to be a discussion to find out, you know, where and, and when these things could happen, so, you know.
Yeah, we just, we, we have to ask ourselves, do we want visitors? You know, are we going to create accommodations for visitors? And if you're against a particular neighborhood, well, offer an alternative.
Well, I, I, I think first, too, you're talking about, you know, we need to have a place where people stay. I think we need to start with the beautification of Paklet, just like Ms. Quinn pointed out. All these things in the master plan, you know, let's work on that, let's do that. And then we can see where, when people come in to accommodate them.
I agree.
There's nothing that they're coming into right now.
We should address some of the blight first, for sure.
All right, I got one suggestion. I suggest that you check with Spartanburg County and see how they view Airbnbs. Also, how do we differentiate between residential area? If they have an Airbnb in it, is that not a business within a residential area?
Yes, because they have to have a business.
Will they have to have a license? Will they have to have certain insurance? Will they have to pay certain taxes? So then are we in a gray area where we got a business within a residential area?
Your ordinance currently allows for home businesses anyway. But one point that the town attorney just brought up was a possibility of some council members and even possibly planning commission members kind of getting together and having a, kind of work this out and make some recommendations, make some thoughts, put something down on paper and then could bring something back to y'all to consider. Keep in mind, we'll still have to go through the process of planning commission, public hearing and two council meetings.
Okay. Everybody satisfied with that? Okay, moving on, discussion regarding the chipper repair and replacement.
It may be the time that the chipper is finally got to the end of its life. The engine itself is, as you can see, it was purchased back in two thousand and five. So it's about twenty years old now. You make, it's, the engine itself needs to be, needs to be rebuilt. And then the place that we currently take it to, JP Carlton, does not provide that service and suggested that we reach out to Kubota up in Rock Hill. If you'd like, we could have it towed up there and get them to evaluate it and see what needs to be repaired. I had a recommendation from Councilman Brackens to see if there's a possibility that the, could be swapped out, the engine itself. I just need to know how you want me to proceed on this? If you would like for me to look, take it up to Rock Hill, get an evaluation on it, see what can be done, what, if it can be swapped out? And/or if you'd like to get cost estimates on replacing the entire piece of equipment? Or if you are interested in discontinuing yard waste pickup?
Can, can this piece of equipment be towed with the L two fifty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My personal opinion, I would say tow it, get an estimate on repairs versus engine replacement versus total piece of equipment replacement, so we can compare apples to apples. There's a possibility that they may have an engine replacement program in place, that's all we have to do. But if the mechanical part of the chipper itself is near its life expectancy, it may be seriously, we have to consider purchasing a new one. And also get us some pricing on rentals if we need to do that in short term.
Kay, anybody have other suggestions?
Is that the consensus of council?
Do I need to make that in the way of a motion?
You can.
All right. And I'll make that in the way of a motion that we get those things to compare price-wise.
So a combination of a one and two on there.
Okay.
I, I think, I'll, I'll second the motion, but, but I think it's, you, you, we, we talked to JP Carlton. I mean, and I think it's, would have been smart just to say how much is a new one? And what are the financing capabilities and long, you know, what's the terms on that? You know, so at least have an idea of what a new one would cost or, or maybe a used one, you know, something of that sort. I would, I would say present as many options as possible in lieu of also having it checked out to see if the engine can be fixed or replaced and find out if the bearings and the, and, you know, the teeth have been replaced lately, you know. I would get an overall, overall idea of what the value of the, the machine is now and the longevity moving forward. Exactly, I mean, it, the hydraulic pump and, you know, it only makes sense. I would say all of the above.
If you remember, at the end of last year, we had to spend some ARPA funds and one of the things that we were considering was, or the one thing council was considering was replacing the chipper. And I believe the numbers were around fifty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars. So I just want to keep that in mind for y'all to consider, don't want to get sticker shock when you see this. But we'll tow it up, we'll have public works tow it up to Rock Hill and get it evaluated and get options there as well as options from JP Carlton and any other companies like the mayor. And then also rental options as well and bring that to you for the next council meeting.
I, I would ask that when you bring that to the next council meeting, present it as not a, a whole lump sum cost, but have the financing terms available for that too. So how many years are you going to pay and what's the, what's the, what's the, what's the dent in the budget based on that? As opposed to, hey, it's fifty thousand dollars for a chipper? Because that's not, that's not exactly the way it is.
Yeah, the last one we financed over five years.
That's right, seventeen, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion to second. Any discussion? Please vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay.
One item, if you don't mind, before you go into the, your next comments on there. I believe this, that was the last item that was on the agenda.
Yeah.
Council has received a, an appeal for a business license denial. I would encourage y'all to set a date for that hearing before you leave today. I, I can always send something to, by email, but I'd encourage you to try to set that date before you leave today.
What's the thirty-day deadline, is that like?
The thirty, thirty-day deadline is January second, I believe.
We need to amend the agenda? Anytime between then and now and then?
You just, you would call a meeting for council members or the mayor can call that meeting, but you could go ahead and figure out, if you wanted to have it a week from today on December eleventh, that would be time of the interest, because I know that the, the business owner would like to go ahead and have that hearing as soon as possible.
Anybody have any problem with the eleventh?
I do.
Okay.
So I'm good on a Monday or Wednesday for the rest of December?
What's, what's Wednesday?
Wednesday would be the tenth.
Anybody have a problem with the tenth?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, everybody okay?
That's, that's on a church night, so you want to set it at six o'clock?
Fine.
Six o'clock, December the tenth? I'm okay with that.
If you'd like to make a motion for that, so we can have that official.
All right, I'll make that in the way of a motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Anybody have any questions? We'll meet here on the tenth at six o'clock. Just to hear that and. We'll, all in favor, all opposed? Okay, all right. Mr. Doherty, you have any comments?
No comments. No comment.
What about you?
Oh, yeah, I'm half of Operation Gross Barnburg and John Coats. Just wanted to thank the town for supporting the new event that's up. That's intended for the new park, hopefully someday, the food truck event. I just want to thank all the support and all the volunteers and how the town turned out for it. And I think it went great and that's all I have.
Miss Saxon, you have anything? Rick, you have any?
I just want to thank everybody for their comments and letting us know how you feel and our zoning board for the work and diligence that you put into trying to maintain what's been voted on. And I appreciate all the effort. And I want to thank Teresa and Jason for their service. This very well could be their last council meeting as far as sitting on this side of the desk. I appreciate all the years and the effort and the hard work that they've put in. Don't always agree, that's part of what makes it versatile and trying to keep this town going in the right direction. So I appreciate y'all's service.
You gonna leave me out?
And they, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You're moving to planning.
Ned will continue to serve, but I'm sure these two will also. But I completely forgot about that.
That's okay, that's fine, I'm just joking. Okay, Jason?
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
There you go.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And, you know, I'd like to take this moment to thank, thank y'all, the ones on the board that we're going to be leaving. This possibly my last, I have, probably have one or two more meetings, but I wanted to say this before I have this crowd here. It's been more than, more time, it reminds me how proud I am of the town Paklet and, and the people that make it what it is. Serving Paklet has been one of the greatest honors of my life. We, we shared long nights, good laughs, tough decisions and moments that remind me of why community matters. Everything we've accomplished, we've accomplished together, council, staff and the citizens who care enough to show up, like you have tonight, speak, speak up and believe in, in this place. I leave this seat with a full heart, deep gratitude and complete confidence that the future of Paklet. Thank, and thank you for trusting me and challenging me and walking with me. It's been truly a, a privilege. I'd like to say Merry Christmas to all, thank y'all for coming out.
I got one more, one more thing to add, Mayor. It completely slipped my mind, but our fine town will be hosting the county toward the end of this month. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend, but we all got a lot to be proud of our community and the rest of Spartanburg County is going to get to see that in a few weeks as we host all the people from all over the county that elect to attend. So we all should be proud and hold our head high that, of our community. So that's all I got, I'll make a motion with her.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor, all opposed?